I think we need to make some sort of move. One of the things that was in the An-Hoc Committee recommendation was the potential to put a millage on the table dedicated to street funds for a long-term solution. I think in order to show the citizens of the community that that's a viable option, we need to put something into the game and show serious effort on the part of the city to move forward in that.
And the city has?
If I may, I think there's a commendable effort to put available resources towards streets in this budget substantially more than in previous years. And with any budget for any governmental or private entity in the country, you can find a dollar here or a dollar there, but not the scale of resources that you're talking about to make the difference from that four hundred to the six hundred, that just isn't there.
What's your unrestricted fund balance right now?
Something north of three million.
Yeah, three million is a round number. So what would be a comfortable level to keep the unrestricted at? Is there a level to be looked at?
Well, as established as an endowment fund, it'd be there in perpetuity. There's a spending limit based on the rolling average of the earnings for the fund, and the current limit expects that to be available every year from here on out for virtually ever. And to the degree you spend those resources now, obviously, you impact the earnings opportunity in the future and potentially reduce the available cash five years from now. Having said that, if you have another 2008 market crash, or if you have another 2009 market recovery, then those numbers are going to change fairly dramatically one way or the other.
If I might elaborate on that a little bit. The four percent spending rule was derived at as an attempt to balance the needs of today's generation within the year of the future, given the asset allocation that is in the fund. And we did quite extensively reading the oil and gas, but we've got some advisors to kind of arrive at that. In fact, it reduced from four and a half percent because the expected output from market experience moving forward is not as great as it has been in the past, according to sources and according to investment advisors. The other thing to keep in mind is we did do a sensitivity analysis, assuming that there was none of the excess earnings tab, to look at what would happen in a range of scenarios that would basically cover about eighty percent of the middle section of the belt. So in real extreme event either way, it's a probably covered that. And what that showed is, in most situations, you would be able, because of the smoothing that's built into that spending rule, you would be able to sustain a substantial portion of the spending that you have today. Now, that's nice from a budgetary standpoint, but that doesn't, again, as Bennett mentioned, that doesn't preclude council from making the decision if they would like to spend that. The other piece that we have to keep in mind is when the charter amendment was adopted, it protects the principal of the accumulated royalties. At that point in time, the only thing that we could invest that into are stable value investment instruments, which means if you hold them to maturity, ads in a bank collapse, you're going to get the principal back. The way that we are investing it now is we're exposed to market risk, and so those underlying assets fluctuate in value. And so the combination of having underlying assets that fluctuate in value, you couple that with a spending policy, and that helps to offset some of those risks moving forward over time in case of market crashes. Let me give you an example. This is extremely. Let's say we pull out every last penny of excess investment earnings above the accumulated royalties, and tomorrow the market declines thirty percent. You now have an underwater oil and gas fund, which means the value of that fund is less than what the accumulated royalties are. And that's a little bit of uncharted territory. It's certainly allowed, I believe, based on the state law that was passed, but yet it kind of violates the spirit of the charter. And so you've got to balance that as well.
From my perspective, if I look at this just from a business approach, pulling resources and investing in a depreciating asset versus maintaining an investment in a fund that is creating a return, once it's spent, it's spent. We will recover that. So it's definitely a balancing act, as I agree with Mr. Bradford in that respect, but I do think we have to exercise extreme caution in depleting that resource beyond, you know, acceptable level. To me, it's what we feel we've got in the budget right now. I feel that's an appropriate level. There may be some flexibility in that somewhat, but I don't see us tapping into that too much further, because I believe it's not a sound business investment from the city's, from my perspective.
The oil and gas money also recognize the need to maintain, and recommended that the spending rule does not change on the oil and gas. Do you have thoughts on the road funding?
The River Street, Streetscape Fund, that is not in this budget.
The, you referring to the bond that the city had?
Right.
That bond expired this year, and so that money is available and is part of the funding stream that's built into the section on streets.
Okay.
There's a DVA bond that also funded the Streetscape, and I think that's five million dollars.
Five million.
Who was to refinance that by a few years ago, except five or six years ago?
What was that total, a hundred million?
It was around a hundred and forty-five thousand, but that freed up for the major street fund for a year.
Thank you. Am I wrong, is it ten-two is what the oil and gas, is that?
It's been right, it's been right around a little bit north of ten. I haven't checked it at the latest quarter, they say, or no, they say, but it moves up and down.
And the cap is seven-two or six-seven?
No, it's above seven. It's around seven.
Seven-two, I believe it was. It's twenty-seven. I would point out, for the public's benefit as well as the council's, I mean, this is in a pretty nice place to be with an oil and gas trust fund that's providing that kind of income to the general fund over here. Few cities have that.
I understand your point that we need to get to like six hundred thousand. I just feel that we need to find that somewhere else where we need to wait. I think staff has done a good job in just tumping to get to that money, with money available in this budget, and protecting the oil and gas fund to help preserve it so it maximizes its earning potential for future projects.
Perhaps one more comment, if I may. In a community that I previously served in, the top council priority was to take assets from any place for resources and put it in the street program. And it took five years to achieve that goal. It didn't happen overnight because infrastructure was a huge, huge investment. They did get there, but it took five years to get there. So if you make significant steps every year over time, you can get there, but it's unlikely to achieve that in the short term.
One thing I'd like to point out on this budget page that's here, if you notice, this is a projection for the capital improvement fund. And if you see right here at the top, there's three hundred and seventy-four thousand, that's the, that's the amount that was available via the spending rule for the proposed budget. I dropped that down to three hundred and fifty thousand, I'm in a projection, simply to be conservative. It could be that if the market goes down, or it could be higher than that. But I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that, because if that, let's say that stayed at three hundred and seventy-five thousand, knowing how that would have an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in resources that could be available. So I just wanted to point that out, that that's a, I try to be conservative.
Would that automatically flow to the street improvements, or not? That would require a separate allocation?
No, well, the plan that was laid out in the budget takes eighty percent of the uncommilated puts it towards streets, so council would approve that in future years. They could take a hundred percent of that.
Under the proposed budget, eighty percent of that twenty-five K would flow to the street?
Yeah.
And looking at some of the projects that are going out, such as the chimneys from the rings, are there any projects that we're foregoing or delaying that might cause heartburn as far as, you know, chimney can cause you all kinds of issues beyond just repair of chimney. So are there any projects out there that were kind of delaying?
That's a very good question. I really explored all the department records, and I think they worked really hard at trying to foresee what projects were coming out of the capital improvement plan. A lot of it are just kind of placeholders. One example comes to mind is at some point, the fire station is going to need some work on the exterior. But I don't know that that's been evaluated to a point that maybe give definitive timelines or dollar amounts. See, if Dave or Sean can speak to that more directly. You know, clearly, I think in the water and sewer fund, there's no shortage of capital projects, but that's got a dedicated funding source. So I think as City Hall ages, we're going to come up with more offensive, as an example, this just came to our attention, we have a boiler downstairs, we have a failed heating chamber that's going to shut down. And that's probably going to cost nine thousand dollars to replace that. So as things move along and this building ages, you'll have more of it. We've got windows out here on the south side or the west side of the building that are appealing, and they need to be addressed this year, the roots are going to start to get damaged. So there's some things like that that have gone on in time. I don't think that there's anything that was extremely pressing and urgent in the capital improvement fund from the general fund standpoint, but there will be some items that we have to keep in mind.
Is there any other comments on the street fund, the streets? Any other issues that you want to talk about?
How about the street?
Any other issues in the budget?
In the budget, appropriation, ADS, for example. In the budget, we've got thirty-six and a half thousand dollars for ADS. Also, as part of the county, you pay county taxes. If I, if I break down the ninety-one thousand dollars that the county has budgeted for ADS, it's about three dollars and seventy cents per citizen in the county, per person. The city on top of that puts thirty-six and a half thousand dollars in, that's another seven dollars and forty cents per person in the city. Is there some rationale for the city paying such a high part of the ADS expenses? Actually, I happen to know the history on that. Back in the day, the city and the county shared those expenses almost fifty-fifty. So the city paid substantially more than it does today. And at the time, there was a belief that the city received disproportionate benefit from economic development because we were the core community in the county, and it was most likely that any significant economic development would occur within the city or in the immediate environs that would also benefit the city and/or its taxpayers and residents. That formula was changed to the two to one that has stuck for fifteen-odd years. And that same formula is used today where the county contributes two dollars for one dollar of city contribution, based on the same perception that the city receives some disproportionate benefit because we are the core city. Can I tell you that we do in fact receive a disproportionate benefit? I can't tell you that today. I would certainly hope that would be the continuing case. I understand ADS was here and provided a presentation a month or perhaps two months ago, and walked through some of their experiences at least in city versus out of the county activity. And from just a brief meeting, my recollection is that they've generated substantial grant dollar income for city projects, which would be disproportionate to what's received in the county. Whether that's been the long-term case or not, I really can't speak to, but that's the history and the rationale for one of the city contributions in addition to the county contribution.
I know over the last few years after John Rose left, I mean, his job was a lot into community development. When he left, Denise kind of assumed that role, that her focus remained on planning and zoning. So the city has really been kind of missing a person who can really dedicate a lot of their time towards that and having to rely on the ADS for the city's economic development.
And that would include the grant writing aspect as well as industrial commercial retention. Right. When I look at some of the appropriation, you know, two-one-one's another. The county puts three thousand in, the city's got three thousand budgeted for two-one-one. Over twenty-five percent of the population, you know, looking at the areas where we pay and double, are contributing above and beyond the rest of the county. And then I question, you know, what's the economic benefit we're getting for the extra money that we're putting into these? And again, I'm looking for anything that I can find that would help us add to funding for local streets this year, and start making some progress as opposed to, as Councilman Gussad pointed out, you know, we've got a depreciable property when we're looking at streets, but the more they depreciate, the more expensive they are to prepare and take care of in the future. So I think we have to balance some of those issues and look for some of those dollars of best focus. I can't speak to nine-one-ones or two-one-ones specifically, but I would share your bias that city taxpayers shouldn't pay twice for what the county is paying for. I would agree with you.
Anything else?
Chief. Chief Lockman is here, and there's an item in the budget for training deputy chief, sending him to the police academy. Would you like him to speak on that issue, please?
I would defer to the chief. Thank you. One of my jobs is to provide a succession plan for in the event I retire or when I retire. My goal is to provide the city council with key individuals with the necessary training to give you flexibility to make decisions on staff in-house. One of those decisions would be to train Deputy Chief Dartling to be a police officer to allow you the ability, if you chose to do so, to make him a deputy director of police and fire rather than living in the fireside. Part of that succession plan in-house in the police department has Steve Schmanning has been trained to be potentially be your backup for safety. I believe Steve doesn't come with the same experience that I have and would need more help than I need in the police side. I believe that Deputy Chief Dartling would provide you an opportunity to make him a deputy director and give Steve more assistance in the day-to-day operating of the police department in that sense. So my goal is to give you key people training to the level that gives the city council options when I leave to put people in the right positions, to put the right people in the bus in the right seats. The city, I'm sorry, the community college typically runs a college recruit school program, it was a two-year program at Marshall College. You go to college, get your degree, and you end it with a, with a police academy. For the first time in my history here, they're running just an academy that's not tied to their college program. We've never done it. This is the one and only time they actually run a condensed academy, start to finish, Monday through Friday, a short period of time, and it's been, the cost is five thousand dollars. So for me, it's a unique one-time opportunity. If I am able to, to put someone in the police academy, well, that being a two-year project. The deputy chief had recently, imagine he graduates in May, has his associate's degree, and he's qualified by the college to attend that academy, providing these physical standards. It's just an opportunity for me to provide you opportunity in my life. Sure.
Would his training continue beyond the academy? I mean, would he be then going to actually put some of that, what he learned to practice? Are the practices learned?
Actually, what happened was you would be sworn as a police officer, and he'd be used, and he'd be required to spend a certain amount of hours every weekend in patrol car with a, with a police officer, yes. And he would be able to respond from a police car to a fire EMS call.
It's more than just going and getting the...
Absolutely, yes. There you go.
Personnel requests.
Okay.
Location.
That's on, on the line. My paper addressed an increase of one FTE for the city clerk office. And we've got a one-half FTE in the end here. Could you clarify that, Chief?
Sure. I think we would prefer we be, Michelle and I, full-time. I think it would make it a lot easier to implement, as the chief was talking about succession plan and the transition plan and facilitated cross-training. But given competing budget priorities, including street funding and some other personnel requests, we tried to make the numbers work, and so we thought we would start at a half-time, and then as that developed, perhaps, you know, promote that to a full-time position down the road. If there's a way to get a full-time position, I think it can be easily justified, and I think it'd be pretty critical for the, for the cross-training that needs to happen in anticipation of some kind of retirements in a few years. But we thought the half-time would at least be a start towards that.
And if you're looking to train someone, the person you might initially want to get in there, you want to make sure has the qualifications, as you say, to start training for those who are retiring in a few years. My concern would be if we start off at the half-time, what would be the quality of the individual and their qualifications versus a full-time getting them into that job?
I absolutely share those concerns, and another concern would be a person that would potentially want to apply for a part-time job may not want a full-time job, and so they may not be open to accepting a full-time job down the road. I mean, it may be somebody who's got requisite skills, but maybe has family commitments, or maybe just wants to supplement, you know, anything for their family. So I share those concerns, and we talk about that internally as well.
And what would be the estimate to get that to a full-time person?
You would probably add, and this, I'd have to look at the numbers, but it would be at least thirty thousand probably. So I'm trying to figure, you know, that's assuming a family health insurance, pension, the higher...
Right. Because, yeah, with retirements, we really do need to start looking at bringing somebody in to start that training.
And this, and this position would only be in for the city clerk? Or would it...
Originally, there was going to be a full-time position hired after Mr. Rose retired to kind of be a floater between a bunch of different departments, and then that didn't materialize. It became, the position may still be a floater, but it would primarily be in the clerk and finance office. Our offices, even though they're separate, but it's basically one as a, as a cohesive unit. I mean, we do things together and we back each other up. And so that position would be cross-training to facilitate succession planning, but it may, it may be able to take minutes for Denise when she's at the planning commission, because that's hard to run a meeting and it'd take minutes, or it'd take minutes at other meetings. So it still would have some level of floating, but it would be primarily assigned downstairs.
I guess I would like to see Denise being helped out. She is one person doing a job of three.
And that, and that was, that was the intent all along?
Well, another thought would be to make this the full-time position, hire it halfway, and then make the commitment that we have to find the funds to make it a full-time position in the following years. That you hire a full-time person, but that person doesn't start until six months.
We could certainly proceed with that expectation, but we from the staff level can't make a commitment to next year's budget.
Right. That would have to be a council that we hire this full-time, only that, to help us in the immediate year, hold that off for six months, this full-time position.
Where are we sitting with the fund balance?
Where are we at with fund balance?
Are we drawing some out this year, and it's a little less than it was the year before?
Yes, I mean, the last, the current, we had, we had budgeted money in the last couple of years to draw down fund balance, and it's been, we've come in less than what we had thought each of those years. So in this year's budget, there's seventy-two thousand dollars of brought out of the fund balance budget, and sixty thousand for the third-year commitment to the Ramsdale Executive Director, twelve thousand to fund paramedic training. However, we do have a revenue sharing board grant in for that, which would eliminate the need to draw that down if that was the case.
But I would caution the council that we do have some non-recurring expenses associated with this position that will need to come later. We have the fund balance, not only the severance package, but also some of the recruitment funds that can be necessary. There will be an impact beyond what this budget looks. I understand that. I just, when I, when I look at that and I see, you know, what, what the goal is and what the requirements are, if, if there's any possibility to go to a full-time position instead of a half-time position in, in the future, I would be supportive of that. One of the areas that I, that I asked Mr. Bradford about earlier was the, was the Ramsdale. We show eighty-nine thousand dollar fund balance with the Ramsdale, and we put ninety thousand dollars in this year instead of the hundred we put in last year. We show almost the same fund balance at the end of the year, and my question would be, is there a possibility of reducing the ninety thousand dollars to cover this need going forward and still having a sufficient fund balance at the end of the year for Ramsdale based on sales or increased revenue?
So what Councilmember Smith is referring to is if you look at this slide down here, you can see a projection for the end of cash balance of the Ramsdale. I would just make a couple of comments on that. I think that that is probably more than sufficient for, for an operating cash at a standing point. There is a portion of that that is left over capital improvement fund dollars that have been spent, I think around ten thousand, maybe a little bit less than that. But those will probably be spent if we don't get funding for the marquee, there's some different things that we could fix on the outside of. So there's the potential that you could draw that down. So for instance, as an example, if you reduce that allocation to eighty thousand, it was a hundred this year, we budgeted ninety, reduce it to eighty dollars, free up some resources that could be in one house there. One of the things with these budgets to keep in mind is they're, they're very sensitive to the amount of programming that we do. So unlike most of the city enterprises, when you put on a production, you have some risk capital that you put out. Sometimes you make money, sometimes you lose money. Hopefully, you make more than you lose on the other side. And so it's really depending on what, what kind of programming we're going to be doing, that could impact the needs for cash, and also what kind of fundraising way we'll be doing this year. We haven't gotten the fundraising to where anybody would like it or it needs to be, though we're making progress towards that. Hopefully, we can, we can continue to make progress. And so last year, in the current fiscal year budget, it was a pretty aggressive budget. I don't typically budget that aggressively, but we really thought that we could, we could do some things, and it just didn't materialize. We did a lot of programming, but, but we weren't all that profitable. And so we really ratcheted back the budget for the Ramsdale this year to try to be more realistic as to what we thought. So for instance, we show ten thousand dollar in donations. I'd like to think we could do better than that, but I don't want to be all the way out in this either. Mr. Terry's here as well, and he may be able to speak about it. There's going to be a lot of things happening at the Ramsdale that could impact this budget as well with the, with the upcoming market study, assuming that gets funded by a grant, and that could all lead to really positive. I will say there is a lot of discussion right now going on about the Ramsdale, about the community, and I think people are realizing that, hey, the community really does need to step up and support this. So I'm hopeful that we'll... So I'm hopeful that will translate into more volunteers, more activity, there are more ticket sales and more fundraising, but I don't have a crystal ball for that right now. But I think the momentum is a great direction.
And I'm not trying to second-guess you on, on the budget and the numbers, but again, I'm looking at areas where potentially there may be some funds in, in everywhere. We've got money that are, that is in fund balances and, and such that kind of turnover year after year is, is potential. And we've got debt service coming out of the capital improvement fund and that's obligated to grow into the future. But it would be nice to support the, uh, the one, the full-time person as opposed to a part-time person and be able to move forward there. We would likewise, um, you've got in the budget for the assistant public works director, partly funded from the general fund, partly from, uh, public works.
More water.
I understand the need for those positions, um, just coming up with the money to do that and, and do streets and make sure we're focused on the essential services as opposed to things that aren't quite as important.
If I may, if the jury, council feels that way, we can go back and try to figure our way to make that happen.
So we, we do have an $11,250 contingency line item, which I try to build in when, when we can and the budget supports it. So if council doesn't want to make changes for whatever reason, there's some money there that's not as disruptive to the budget, so I just point that out in case that, that wasn't noticed.
I guess I'm hesitant to use, um, fund balance out of the Ramsdale just because of the age of the building, you know, you're dependent on programming. You may need that fund balance. And you're wanting to take 10,000 to support a, uh, the full-time?
Full-time, yes.
If I may, my suggestion was that the council doesn't need to figure out how to make that happen. If you say that's a priority, then we'll try to figure out how, how to make that happen and bring it back to you.
I would support the, the full-time position as well. I think we would be, um, it'd be challenging to be able to hire somebody part-time and then assume that they'll either, one, agree to full-time or, two, that, um, they'll be qualified for the full-time position long-term. I would like to see that hired and have the full benefit of that person, um, within the first year or so. That would be my recommendation, is that we find a way to massage what we have to do to, to make it happen.
That may involve deferring the hiring for three or four or five months so that you can accumulate some of that and taking some money from here to there. But again, I see that as a staff function to figure out, just not your job to try and figure it out.
Sure.
I'd like to see what, what some do and I'll see what, what come back.
So are you guys supportive of, uh, turning to half-time into a part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
Yeah. We'll work on it.
Any other? Um, can someone up there, any other issues addressed, or questions that you may have that haven't already been addressed?
Um, the DPW, I know there's a couple spots open in the hierarchy chain. Are we going to, are we going to go down that road to hire, um, at least two new employees for the DPW?
I'll defer on Mr. McCullough.
Um, as you're aware, there was, uh, departure in that wastewater treatment plant when Jody Banks took a position elsewhere. Um, we have advertised that position and are collecting resumes. They're not coming in very fast, but we do have a small number of resumes that were coming in and are going to be looking for other opportunities to get that out there to do some recruitment. Um, in the short term, we have contracted Jody specifically for her license because she's licensed to operate that plant. And so she's doing, um, a small amount of hours, two to six hours per week, just reviewing the reports and signing all of our seminals to the DEQ until we fill that position full-time. But our full intention is to, is to replace that position. Um, we had a retirement in the water department, so going through the normal steelworkers contract, we posted that position internally first. That position was signed by a bridge tender and that bridge tender has 90 days for which to make a final decision on whether or not they want to stay in that position. So we're about two weeks away from that, from that 90 days expiry. Um, in anticipation of that, we've posted that vacant bridge, bridge, bridge tender position and removed that posting yesterday. So, uh, I can make a temporary assignments according to the contract for 30 days. So once I get within that 30-day window, then I can take the next step. Um, and so when we do not have any more moving within the, the union itself, within the current employees, then we'll advertise for the open position wherever that, whichever department that's in.
So the answer is we're moving to those positions.
Maya? Question?
On your, um, to replace Jody, are you looking for a water sewer or a disinterne?
What we've advertised is for a, uh, B-licensed wastewater operator. Wastewater.
Yeah, B?
B.
Okay.
A or B?
Yeah.
Jeff, real quick to the, um, potential for the deputy director. Does that follow the same process for internal posting first or is that a position that, uh, both external and internal, internally? How does that process work out?
This would be a position outside of the union.
Correct.
Um, I believe we've got a, a very capable internal candidate for that. Um, so if, if the budget proceeded as proposed, um, we would do a promotion from the union into a non-union position and then would hire a new union position.
Does that follow the same way you're going to do the rest of it?
Any other? Council member that said it's...
No, we have, everyone that I was saying here much as well, so...
Is there anything you can come up or any other questions that you've got that you have, or concerns that you have?
Well, the only thing I have, that's extra, I was kind of looking for time, but was actually because of the beach, you know, we got $25,000 in there to do and I think the estimate was like 100,000 hours. Is that correct? Uh, I, I know there's some extrovert numbers that was thrown at and I can't really fathom why a sidewalk with just a couple of cabins and plus that with my, my sale pictures, I would, might see another couple of dollars of some sort thrown in there to get the thing going and, uh, put up one or two of these little cabanas and, and, uh, dress the place up. I mean, it's a beautiful place and if we're trying to sell our beaches and that, what better place to put your money? And that's something that everybody can use and everybody drives out to both beaches. So I think we should address it instead of just keeping, putting money off to the side and it'll never get done. The last, when, when we did the beach, boy, the master plan, that was what, 10, 12 years ago and that hasn't accomplished anything? Oh, yeah, accomplished that, yeah, accomplished it.
There's been significant improvements like that.
Yeah, but that's been, that dormant and not, and it looks like a, yeah, doesn't look very nice on there.
The, with the $25,000 that council had allocated towards Fifth Avenue Beach, um, we met with some council people, also met with Parks Commission representation, um, our engineering firm drew up a conceptual plan that the council, the, the Parks Commission endorsed and then we received cost estimates on that. Spicer also presented, um, I think the total was about 160, 170,000 dollars and included sidewalks, benches, grills, new lighting, uh, three small cabanas, covered picnic areas and then one large one for larger community events. Um, we took that plan and those concepts back to the Parks Commission and it was the, the consensus of the Parks Commission to not take that money and ask for an additional 43, basically would take an additional $43,000 allocation from city council to match the 25,000 that's already there in order to seek an 80/20 grant to fund the entire project. The Parks Commission felt that with, with the emphasis on the streets right now, that they did not want to come back with a request to the council to fund additional match money towards that. And so what they recommended and what we put in the budget is to do all the surface improvements that we can, complete the construction of the sidewalks, um, install benches, uh, grills and add picnic tables to that area, absent the, the four cabana structures and then to look for opportunities in the future where we could fund those.
Okay, I think there's some movement going on down there.
Right, and we intend to do the sidewalk work in-house and I've got a lot of the equipment, so I think we can pull together quite a bit of improvements down there this summer.
Good. Clean that place up. Make it usable.
Any other questions? Are there any other?
Yeah, you know, with the discussion last year about why the park in New Rocket, was that two years ago?
No, I think that they were waiting on the funding for the...
We have a grant, we have a grant for the new Rocket Park, um, and a site plan. All the equipment has been ordered. Um, trying to set up a meeting with Sinclair, uh, who's providing all of that equipment for us. Um, trying to set up a meeting in the next week so that we can begin planning out the construction of this. Um, they believe that the equipment will be delivered to the city early June and so what I would like to do is, um, we're going to work to set up, or work to pour all the concrete and get the site set up and graded. Prior to that, we're going to do that in-house and we've got capital improvement money budget from last year. Um, and then set up a community build mid to late June so that we can have a grand opening and ribbon cutting for the, during the forest festival. The equipment that's in the current Rocket Park, the Parks Commission would like, like the pieces that are safe and usable to be dispersed through some of the other locates, through some of our other park locations. Um, one of those pieces is not the existing rocket, um, which is not safe and doesn't meet any of the, the current standards. And so we haven't had extensive, extensive discussions on that, but it could either be saved in some fashion or it could be, uh, auctioned off or sold and the proceeds put back into the park system. So that hasn't been decided yet.
Any other questions, concerns, questions?
Um, Karen, I'd like to address one question that I had quickly. The $140,000 for Reed Riley, that is a commitment by Reed Riley Social Marketing Materials as part of the development agreement that they entered into with the city when they built their asphalt. And so we fully expect that, that, that will be available. It's not a cash agreement, it's, it's basically in-time paving services. So we expect that that will be available. The reason that it was shifted, um, was because of the timing that we thought might be realistic for doing cross-street by the school.
That answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm honest, I know for sure and I think you just answered it, that, yeah, that in-time contribution is going to happen. It's in writing on that.
Is the $15,000 budgeted for the playground equipment, is that already allocated to go towards Rocket Ship Park? On page 17 of the, in parks, capital, capital projects. Or is that designated for parks?
Are you talking in the capital improvement plan, council member, if you could speak?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Page 17, parks. The capital project. Where is that?
Um, speak to that a little bit. Um, the capital improvement plan is simply a, a planning document, a planning tool. The, the year one, but the year one allocations that are built into the capital improvement plan are funded in the budget. Anything in years two through six is totally up to council's discretion. And so we try to place those, uh, place items that identify as needs within a capital improvement plan and then each of the individual sheets identify what the funding source might be, what funding limitations are. And so the 25,000, um, in year two, if that's what you're looking at, for Fifth Avenue Beach improvements, is totally dependent on funding or grants or things like that materialize. It doesn't commit council, it's not set in stone, it's, it's simply a planning and a placeholder type of, of document.
I can put, um, maybe just a little bit. What were the thoughts about the, are we going to go for recycling or are we going to discuss, um, buy them or, I know there's a contract coming up on that.
If I may, that's coming to the nearly top of my list and there will be a work session necessary to discuss that in relative to near future. Um, but that's not really a budgetary impact except to say that the budget anticipates the status quo and if there are changes in the service delivery or costs, then there may need to be a rate increase. I think the budget may anticipate that, but does not budget a rate increase. We have a workshop on that drill today.
Actually, the budget, the budget does, with the status quo, does budget a rate increase. And the reason for that is the, the, um, part of the funding for the capital, for the refuse fund is by millage. And the, the millage is, in the tax base, as you know, has gone down with the exception of this year, it got back up a little bit. So when you have a fixed contract that increases in costs and, and half of your funding stream is going down or staying flat, the other half of the funding stream has to be increased to make that work. And you can see the fund balance in this chart, we've drawn that down intentionally over years because we had more money in there than we needed, but we're to the point now where we need to really stabilize that fund balance. If, as part of the work session discussion that's coming forth, there's really the two issues. One is what do you want to do about recycling and two, what do you want to do about trash laws? And there's options for both of those that allied waste is provided, but that needs another discussion item and then we can adjust the budget accordingly, like, depending on the outcome of that event.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other? Do you want to answer, council wants to discuss concerning the budget? So I think one major change that council has agreed upon is going back and looking at how we run and fund a full-time position instead of a part-time position. Is there any major consensus?
There will be at least two additional opportunities for council review of the budget at a public hearing a week from tonight with a work session after that. If you desire, uh, study session on April 28th of April. My hope would be that at least a portion, if not all of that, could be dedicated to the city manager recruitment process. That will be in agenda item for next week. So depending on what you do next week, that may be an April 28th topic as well as budget issues and then the budget can be considered again yet in May. So there's plenty of additional opportunities if you'd like to and we'll get back to you on how we think we might make this one change work as well.
Okay. There you go. Thank you.